It will be messy. If we could reschedule the non-public session to next Wednesday before at 5:30 at the middle school.
Marie, can you say that again? I didn't hear it till half.
Given the bad weather and not knowing if it's getting worse or better, if we could reschedule the non-public session until next Wednesday before the middle school presentation.
Okay, we actually have Kenny's motion on the table, right? Could you?
That was to add to the agenda, so we.
Okay, so I'm wondering whether we could add Kenny's issue to the agenda and then to see if you make your change.
I thought we did.
Do we already do that?
I thought we already voted.
I thought we did vote on it.
I meant to vote and it's an agreement if we vote in.
Okay. Since everybody agrees to have that, Kenny's motion. So your motion is to postpone the non-public session until.
Reschedule.
Reschedule, sorry, until.
Next Wednesday at 5:30.
Wednesday, 5:30.
Can I ask a question, Jim? You have in the non-public a student thing.
It can wait.
It can wait.
Yeah, we've already taken action. It was just to inform.
Okay.
Okay. So motion by Maria is her second to postpone?
Second, it's just a discussion.
Second by Kenny. Denise?
I guess I'm wondering if maybe we could see how late we go and revisit it because, you know, depending on how long the meeting goes on, I don't know if that would be acceptable.
If somebody runs out and sees.
And Kenny can like walk over and look out the door.
So the motion is to postpone.
Sorry. Yeah, I won't be able to make it at 5:30 on Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay. Then I asked to withdraw my motion.
Motion is withdrawn. Who seconded it?
I was second.
Kenny withdrawn. Motion is withdrawn. Okay. So could we have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the issue about the letter that Kenny's going to raise? All those in favor? I guess you need a motion.
I'll make the. I'm lost where we are. I thought we made the motion. We approved Kenny's addition to the agenda and we just withdrew Maria's.
Okay, so we don't have to approve the agenda with Kenny's addition then? We don't have to do that a second time?
I have to.
Okay, okay, I'm fine with that. Announcements, let's say approval of minutes from the regular. I'm sorry. Public comment. Is there somebody who wants to speak in public comment? No? No? Okay, approval of minutes for Denise?
Our motion to approve the January 4th regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Maria. Are there changes? Denise?
I have two minor changes. The first is really just a point of clarification on page two under the superintendent's report that it was noted that the public forum on the middle school competencies at the middle school is at 7 o'clock on January 25th. I believe it's at 6:30 is what it's listed on the middle school page.
Okay, thank you.
And that is right. Okay, so it is at 6:30. And then.
It's at 6:30?
It's at 6:30 on the 25th. Then on page four, under, let's find it here. Page four, oh, under my motion to approve option three, which includes 100,000, I would like to add, and the health position, because that's what option three was, was to include the 100,000 and the health position.
Are there other changes? Kenny?
Staying on page four, right above it with a comment, I would like to more reflect what I think I said, and I would say Kenny wrote or commented that the school board has identified wellness as a school board goal and an important component of a student's education. With the high school nurse tending to the great volumes of health issues that arise, that person has little remaining time to promote wellness.
Okay. Do you have that, Lori, or can you get that? Okay. Other changes? Sarah?
Also on page four, where, let's see, third paragraph, where it, oh, I just lost page four. Where it says, Sarah Farwell's uncomfortable bringing. I changed it to Sarah Farwell's uncomfortable with the board as opposed to the leadership team bringing the nurse's position forward as the next one to be funded. So I just wanted to make it clear that I was not bringing it forward, but the board was bringing it forward.
Other changes? Okay, with those changes, all in favor of approving the minutes from regular minutes from January 4th, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, those minutes are approved. Could we have a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes of that same day? Denise?
My motion to approve the January 4th non-public meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Seconded by Dan.
I have some, I have a change. There's a couple of things that we're missing off it. Alfred says the board reviewed and finalized the superintendent's evaluation. The sentence needs to be added. They returned to public session at 8:33 PM. And then after it says, the motion was seconded by Sarah and passed 7-0, add the sentence at 8:35, Maria made a motion to adjourn and it was seconded by Dan, the motion passed 7-0.
That part was in the regular.
Oh, it's in the regular minutes? Oh, dude, okay, I'm sorry.
So are those what?
Maria said that those parts are in the regular minutes, so obviously Wendy is more on the ball than I am.
So Roseanne, Roseanne and Dana, never mind?
Never mind, never mind. Yeah.
But I have a question about that.
Okay.
Because I think in non-public, we did not make a motion and vote. What we did is we went back into public session.
It was.
Made the motion and then voted.
It was. Because in the thing that I sent Wendy, it says the board reviewed and finalized the superintendent's evaluation. They returned to public session at 8:33 and then Denise made the motion.
Right, so that's very important, I think.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't look at the regular minutes. But in the non-public minutes, let me look back, it says Denise Day made the motion to accept and finalize the evaluation. That should not, I don't know why that's bolded, but that should be in the regular.
Regular minutes, right.
Then it's not in the regular minutes though.
That's what I was asking. Lori, did you catch that?
The bolded section that says Denise Day.
Yep.
That should belong, I have to go to the regular minutes.
On page.
Yeah, it should go right before Roman numeral eight, or 13, excuse me, adjournment. It should be.
Right before the motion to adjourn.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, okay.
It's in the non-public, but it wasn't non-public. We did the public session.
Right, we were in public session.
Okay. So essentially, we're moving, we're moving that sentence to the regular minutes. That's the understanding, okay? Okay, so the motion, so I think we need a motion then to approve the non-public as revised with the understanding that it's that sentence with Denise Day made the motion, that that sentence is trans, is shifted to the regular minutes.
I don't think we need a motion, we just need to approve it that way, right? Because we already made a motion.
Okay, but that's the understanding.
That's the understanding. But either way, I'll.
So we're just motioning it, just approving it as revised.
As revised, yeah. Okay. So all those in favor of the minutes as revised, please use your hands. Seven in favor. Those minutes are approved as revised. Announcements, accommodations from the district? Announcements, accommodations and comments from the board? Maria?
I just have a comment. It wasn't long ago that Bob and I had a bear in our driveway and we don't live that far from Mastway School. So I was happy to hear our nominee for Secretary of Education telling us that it's okay to have guns in school to protect us from bears.
I just wanted to add one thing. I talked to Tom about it, that a letter came from Matt Pappas, who's on the Rochester School Board, and they're sending as a board a letter to Governor Sununu asking him to support reinstatement of building aid, building construction aid. So I wanted to put it on our next meeting agenda that we talk about it and perhaps support that and send a letter as well.
Does he have a letter that he wants us to sign on to or does he think we should?
He has a letter, but I think, you know, I'll have Wendy put it in our packet and we can discuss how we want to attack it.
Okay, great. Other announcements, accommodations, comments from the board? Nope. District reports, Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you. I'll keep this fairly quick because I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight, but I did want to give you a quick update on as we start heading into standardized testing season. I wanted to inform you of when the test windows were and just give you a little idea of how we're using the data that we've collected so far and kind of where we go from here. First of all, the smarter balanced test window is March 14th to June 9th. And so what that means is we can test our students anytime starting March 14th all the way through June 9th. What we have historically done is tested towards the end of that window for the most part. The only exception was that at the middle school, they did the English language arts portion in April and then they do the math portion in May. But for both Mastway and O'Haremit, we'll be working out their schedules for really the middle to second half of May. Clearly, the high school doesn't have smarter balanced testing, they have SATs and the SAT test dates have been set, April 5th and, hold on, I just lost my. April 5th is the key, the first test date and May 2nd is the makeup date. And then the other standardized testing to keep in mind as we head into the season is science kneecaps, which are, the window for that is May 1 to May 25th. I know I reported to you a couple of months ago that the state officially adopted next gen science as its state standards and yes, there is a clear disconnect between testing people using the kneecap, but it's still a state mandated test and so all of our fourth, eighth and 11th graders will still need to take that this spring. So I'm told it's the last time and our new Commissioner of Education will obviously have a say in terms of how that's replaced or if it's replaced. So just to keep that in mind. In the past, the board has asked about how we utilize the standardized data we collect because I don't want people to think we just do the testing because it's a mandated thing. There's valuable information that comes from it. Key things we're able to do, obviously, Dr. Morse has talked about this many times, it certainly is a district report card to some extent, it gives us an idea of where we stand and certainly this year we have a lot to be proud of with our scores and we have been able to tout ourselves as being the second highest scoring SAT high school in the state. And although they don't rank the smarter balanced results the same way, we are 20 to 24 points higher than state average on all of standardized testing. So clearly our students are doing well, so that's one thing that allows us to do. We also use it as we have curriculum dialogue. This year in particular, we've had a grade six to 12 math committee that's been really looking at our six through 12 math sequence and we've taken a lot of looks at the data as we've made decisions to what our curriculum sequence will be. You'll hear a lot more about that later in the year when we report to you on the work we've done this year, but that's valuable data. The K5 math committee has done a lot of look at the data as well as they've talked about changes that they've made at grade level. Third use that we put this to, we have RTI teams across the district. RTI is Response to Intervention and basically it's a team that takes a look at student data with the idea of trying to figure out what our appropriate response is to provide supports for kids. And Smarter Balance, STAR, Benchmark, all of those data points are brought in as we look at our students and how they're doing and then make recommendations for how to support them either in the classroom or outside the classroom. So that's a third use. And then one thing which I've been working with Sue Johnson about in the IT department, we have in our Power School, which is the student information system, we have a tab called Analytics, which is where we put all of our student data. So as of right now, all of our teachers have the ability, when they're looking at their class roster, to click on the Analytics tab and they can see their, every child in their class's history of all of the standardized testing that they've done in their entire time in public school. So they have access to all of the STAR testing data we do, all the kneecap, as well as smarter balanced data and any other testing they've done. We are currently in the process, because Power School is no longer going to support that software, so we are looking for an alternative and we will clearly, but that notion of having teachers have that access immediately at their fingertips. So when they're grading that science test and the question comes up, gee, you know, this student isn't performing the way I thought they should, it gives them immediate access to information that might be telling to them at the classroom level. So those are all ways that we utilize that data. And so anyway, a lot of planning is going to go on in the next month or so to get us ready for the next round of standardized testing. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this point about that. Sarah?
Last year I mentioned this and I'm just wondering whether any progress had been made or any changes with the RTI stuff. For those kids who are scoring very high on all of their standardized tests yet are not performing, potentially because of organizational skill deficiencies, but not to an extent that they would need special, you know, they qualify for special education. Are there any, do we have any organizational skill RTI stuff at, I'm thinking the middle school level in particular, but Heather may know at the high school level as well.
Right, I mean certainly at the middle school level, in particular, we have a number of math options in particular. Ruth Galing is a math tutor that certainly works with kids in that capacity and there are other opportunities within the school. They also have a thing that they, I forget the current name it's going by, when I was there, they called it achievement block. I think they've changed the name, but there is a period in the day where kids are pulled and are able to be grouped in different ways, so it gives the opportunity to be able to do that kind of thing. I would tell you that that is one of the layers that we often talk about when we say whether or not we have a true RTI system is the really, the real ability to be able to provide those kind of modifications. One of the things that has been a big point of discussion in the math work from grade six to 12 is how we might change the math instruction at the middle school to be able to do more of that. And we talked a lot about, for example, algebra and the high numbers of kids in algebra classes and looking at a way to utilize our math teachers differently so that we have the capacity to be able to do exactly what you're saying, is to work with kids at whatever level they are and provide them the challenge that they need.
Yeah, I'm not thinking of, actually, I'm not thinking of math so much in particular. I think, you know, with Ruth and I know the math teachers that are there do a phenomenal job of working with kids and bringing them in for their RTI times. But I'm thinking more of, you know, kids who need help chunking language arts papers or kids who need help chunking science lab reports that are, you know, that kind of really much more organizational, not so much content, but.
A lot of that is handled at the classroom level by classroom teachers and certainly recommendations do come out of various RTI teams of strategies to try, you know, different types of organizational strategies and that kind of thing. I'd hesitate to say we have a program per se, but clearly there is a focus on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few things. I did wanted to let you know that we did get a air quality report back from Mastway that Jim Rozicki, his staff and Carrie are addressing. We did have a public meeting scheduled for last night and no one showed up. We had informed them as we had informed the board. I just want to make sure that everybody understands the mold that was identified is not the dangerous mold, it's the kind of mold that happens in the atmosphere regularly. And the, so the air gets filtered through the univent and what happened was they also, when they do these tests, do the outside. And this room abuts the courtyard and when they did the outside, this particular mold was high there as well, so it only makes sense it would be in the classroom. So Jim has exercised a lot of proactive measures. One of the things that we wanted to make sure was that we made sure the public was aware, we made sure the teachers were aware, we made sure the classroom parents were aware. But in addition, Jim has put together a second round of testing. So this room was actually tested last year and nothing was found. So this happens when you're doing air quality checks, it's not unusual. But because this type of information can be reacted to emotionally, what we did was Carrie met with the staff and asked if anybody wanted to have their rooms tested. We had, Jim had identified the four corners to be retested, so it wasn't just in that space. And then we just simply said to the staff, if you want your room tested, let us know. And we did. And there was like three more classrooms, I believe. So the whole process, the way that we're dealing with it, is to be proactive and, you know, jump on it and get it mitigated and move on. And all of this was just a result of a teacher who was feeling allergenic in her classroom. So that's the full scoop and I know, I really appreciate Jim's jumping on it. In addition, this is also the time of year where we're getting a lot more absenteeism related to colds and that kind of thing. And so in the wintertime, Jim has the ability to bring in a more industrial version of cleaners just for this very issue, wiping down doors regularly and the cleaner he's using is, it will kill bacteria, you know, once it touches it. So we've been looking at our absenteeism and so it's interesting because we get the reports from the nurses, but the solution is actually in the custodial realm and so I really appreciate Jim jumping on that as well. So those two issues around air quality and illness in the school are being addressed. I just wanted to talk a little bit, always controversial when I call school and, you know, I came in and Al said, pretty lame call, Jim. So I felt really encouraged by that call. But when Lisa and I are talking through it, so we do talk to all the area superintendents, so this is just a reminder for everybody who listens, we talked to all the area superintendents and it was one of those, I don't know, should be called, not called. And so I made the decision to call because the weather report around the times we were going to put the buses on the road was icy rain. And it was, you know, kind of sporadic. Lisa does all of the checking with the road commissioners, wasn't able to get to any of them this morning, they're out doing their thing. Normally she can get to one, maybe two. So the conversation did happen and it was really based on the projection of possibility of ice rain on top of the snow. And, you know, that's, it's always best judgment at the moment. I have to say that Todd and I were joking a little bit, I did get one email today, a parent saying, you know, what were you thinking, kind of, in a very, very nice way. And then later he, so he's looking for response from me or Todd. And then later, before we could even get a chance to respond, he contacted us and said, never mind, I agree with your call. So I don't know what happened, but it's going to happen every time I make a call. So I just want to make sure people know that we do due diligence, but, you know, this is one of those times I disagreed with my fellow superintendents and decided to go with no school, where they did a delay. A principal update, so the principal search from O'Haremit, we opened it over a week to go now, about maybe eight days, nine days. We've had 22 inquiries already, only two completed applications, but the application process closes at the end of the month. We are in the process of forming the interview committee. We've identified the parents already, we've identified the teachers and support staff and in terms of administrators, it will be myself and Carrie. And what we need next is two board members. So if the board would step forward and that would be great. And I think at that point, we have the interview committee and we'll be pulling them together for an organizational meeting by the end of the month.
So do you, when will you want the board members?
I take them now if you can get them.
I think Dan, I've talked to you about it.
I'd like to volunteer.
I'll do it. All right, someone else, anyone else, I mean.
You did it less recently than Maria, right? Maria, you were on the superintendent, the principal. So, and I won't be here, so I think, okay, you do it, Al?
Sure.
Okay, okay. Not that you don't have enough civic responsibility as it is, but.
Just add one more.
Just pivot on.
And then I just want to read a letter to the board from our council and it's on, and this is just to kind of give you the guidance related to petitioned warrant articles. A petitioned warrant article, so I want to read it into the record, that's why I want to take the time to do this, just so it's crystal clear, or as clear as lawyers make it. A petitioned warrant article to establish a football program at the high school is on the warrant. The school board wanted to know whether it could place an explanatory note under the article and two, the actions it can take to let voters know the school board does not recommend the article or does recommend the article. Even if the article passes, it's advisory only. So even if it passes, it's advisory only and the school board is not required to implement it. As explained below, the school board should not place an explanatory note under the article. However, since the petitioned warrant article contains an appropriation, the school board needs to make a recommendation under the article. So you're going to say either you support it or you don't. The school board at its meetings and in the deliberative session can explain its recommendations. So tonight during discussion, whichever way it goes, that becomes part of the public meeting and those minutes are public, so it would tell people how you feel. But at the deliberative session, you also, at that point, can say why you support it or don't support it.
As individuals?
No, at the deliberative session, you can speak as a board if your vote is one way or the other. However, neither the school board nor district employees, so it's not just you guys, it's our employees, should use the district's funds or resources in any way that disrupts, that is designed to influence the vote on the petitioned article. As individuals acting independent of the district, school board members and employees can use their own resources and try to influence the vote on a petitioned article. So basically it's saying, as a body, you can't, but as an individual, you can. So it goes on, she goes into the First Amendment, but I think those are the things that are really important and also, you know, she gives us case law where a council in another town in New Hampshire tried to influence a petition warrant, it was taken to the Supreme Court and their hand was slapped and don't do that again. So basically what Diane is saying to us is, our role tonight is to acknowledge there's a petitioned warrant and you all. a petitioned warrant and you all during discussion can decide whether you support the funding for that and why you would or wouldn't. And that all becomes part of the public record. But outside this meeting and until deliberative session, any one of you can take a position as an individual, but you can't take a position as a body.
Yeah.
And that, I think, is where I'm at in terms of my public...
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
There's going to be a follow-up with the mold thing, right? There's that thing, so it's like, you really, I mean, you worked on it and we're going to check on it again, right?
We have a local organization that does environmental testing coming in on the 25th. They're going to do seven classrooms, some hallways and storage areas, and then two more outdoor. And then two weeks for those results. But you actually have a live body talking through those results and corrective measures.
I had one other question on that, too. And I think the issue is, it's seasonal as well. And so I would recommend kind of testing across seasons as well because maybe this was a low point, maybe it's a high point, but by doing it across seasons, you'll be able to verify that things are all okay.
That was a recommendation in the first report as well, and we're going to take them up on that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Business administrator?
Okay, so tonight is the night you get to officially approve everything for your deliberative session.
Uh huh.
I believe the first item on the agenda is your budget. Last board meeting, you agreed to $43,787,372. Still in agreement?
So you need a motion at this point to officially...
Okay.
Someone make the motion?
I move that we adopt the FY '18 budget for presentation at the deliberative session.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Dan. I think we've already decided on this pretty much, right?
Yep.
Okay. Another discussion? Nope. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. The motion passes.
And the next one is your default budget. And the default number came in at $43,995,149.
Uh huh.
All agree?
So it's a little more than $200,000 above...
Yes.
...the budget we're proposing.
And doesn't happen very often, but because you've done your job in reducing positions and in retirement incentive, your salaries are less, so you have a default budget that's actually more.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the default budget? Al?
I'll make a motion to approve the default budget.
Moved by Al, seconded by Denise. Discussion on this? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. The default budget is approved. We're not, I think we're really moving down next to motion to approve the warrant articles for deliberative session. So I don't know exactly why we had that third bullet in there.
I think that's so that you can recommend or not recommend the one article that you have not taken a position on.
Oh, yeah.
Wow, thank you.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So prior to this, you didn't have a warrant with the petition warrant article on there. And as the attorney stated, you need to take a position and recommend or not recommend because it has a dollar figure with it. And that has to be on the warrant for deliberative session.
Okay, so at this point, should we take up warrant eight? Is that what we should be doing?
Yes.
Okay.
So everything else, you, before we get into eight, you have the votes you need for them to sign? No, we have to wait for...
No, we have to wait.
We have to go through all the warrant articles, right?
Yes.
But you're suggesting we start with eight because that's a new, and take a position on...
It's up to you if you'd rather just go through each one individually.
I would do it last. I would do the deliberative session warrants.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think that's what I do.
We'll go through one by one.
Go through them three through eight.
Okay.
Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay. So we're approving, are we approving the warrant article and the descriptions? When there's a description or just...
Technically, I guess you're doing the whole thing together.
Okay.
Did you want to do them separately?
No, I wouldn't. You know, I just, just wondering what we're doing. Okay, could I have a motion to approve warrant article three? To recommend warrant article three, is that, or to...
No, you've already done that. I think you just went through the process of approving them.
So just go through four, five, six, in that order? So we're going to go to four because we just approved?
Okay.
I'm confused.
I'm confused. So we don't have to do anything with three?
Yeah, you have to do three, sorry. Yes, you do.
Yeah.
That's the...
That's the teacher's comment.
Yeah, just technically after your public hearing, you just have to go through and say, yes, this is what we want to go forward with.
Okay.
We're not making any changes.
Yes. There weren't any changes, but...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so motion to approve warrant article three? Is that, that's right? Okay, Al?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve warrant article three as written.
Moved by Al, seconded by Maria. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Article three is approved. Warrant article four? Denise?
I make a motion to approve article four as presented.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Dan. Discussion on this? Nope. All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. That motion is approved, that warrant is approved. Article five? Denise?
I make a motion to approve article five as presented.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Discussion? Sarah?
I'm just assuming that we are also approving the explanation for warrant article five at this time.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, five, please raise your hand. Warrant article five is approved. Six, warrant article six. Denise?
I make a motion to approve article six and the explanation as presented.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Dan.
Can I, I have just a question on the language where in the warrant, it says that we'll raise inappropriate with such amount coming from the year-end undesignated fund balance. But is that correct? Isn't it coming from the funds that are already in existence?
But technically, when you discontinue those funds, the money goes into the fund balance first. It goes into the general fund, then it becomes part of fund balance.
I get it.
I know. Does that make sense?
And it's hard to say it in the legal language.
Correct.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second on six, right? Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Can I just ask you one thing? Just in the explanation, the funds, if we said the funds will be discontinued and therefore become part of the general fund, just to emphasize we're not raising new money, we're redistributing?
I think it's...
Maybe it doesn't mean...
Add therefore?
Yeah.
I've already got this ready to sign. Yeah, it's ready to sign tonight.
Okay. All right, forget it, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Okay.
So you took the vote, right?
I think, I think people will understand.
I think, I think we took the vote on this, right?
Yep.
Okay, seven in favor, that article six is, warrant article six is approved. Warrant article seven? Denise?
I make a motion to approve article seven as presented.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Discussion on this? None? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, warrant article seven is approved. Okay, warrant article eight, the petitioned...
So remember, you're not making a vote to approve. The citizens have taken care of that. They've stepped out of the process. And so really, it's about whether you support the appropriation.
Isn't, isn't the vote the whether we recommend the warrant?
Right. Whether we recommend the warrant or don't recommend the warrant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I thought about this, whether we should even, no matter how you choose to vote, whether the motion should be to recommend the warrant and then we'll have the vote, rather than to have a negative motion, then it's a little cleaner that way. So I think, I mean, I'll make the motion to recommend warrant article eight as written, even though that may not be my vote. And if I can get a second, then it gets on the table and then we can discuss it. Is that, is that okay? I think it's cleaner that way.
Okay.
Okay, second. Okay, so warrant article eight is on the table. So I think if we have questions, this is a time to discuss this warrant article. Obviously, it's something we haven't been talking about. Denise?
I was just wondering, I know Corey Parker is here, and if he had any information...
Yeah.
Yeah, Kenny, second.
Oh, okay. Any maybe information to add to what's on here in terms of, I guess one of my questions is the amount in terms of, is that a realistic amount? Or, you know, I guess just to kind of shed some light on that.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Since our previous presentation of this a couple of years ago, I did reconnect with our local vendor who I worked with to get all their pricing at that time. Back then, it was $39,940 a year as an annual expense with the upfront expense of $64,750. Since that time, there has been some changes, obviously for the better, in our environment outside. And so a couple of things that I tried to remove from that number to be as clean as possible was, if you remember, we had a daily transportation rate going over to Woodridge or an outside facility at $65 a day, which also took into consideration us needing to secure a second trainer for those facilities. So that amount of 9, 9,900 came off. But one thing we needed to now consider, because we could potentially host practices here, the day would need to extend as well. So for whatever teams, we would need to find another two and a half hours a day outside. And when you look at the school calendar, 49 days approximately for practices, that would be $7,350 a year in additional expenses of keeping those lights on through those evening hours to offset those practices. So it wouldn't directly be footballs, but it would definitely be at an expense that we don't anticipate needing for next year because we don't have another program or in two years that would need to practice on our facility. So I feel pretty confident about my numbers, but with those changes, I had an annual yearly expense of $37,275. And then taking into consideration the upfront expense of all the equipment necessary, and then every five years of an expense of $62,000. And what's taken into consideration with that every fifth year would be uniforms, wear and tear of all the equipment necessary for football that you would need to replace. Certainly, there's reconditioning that takes place on an annual basis, but the life of a shoulder pad and a helmet should not expire, or should expire after five years. So the $34,000 budgeted startup cost number, I would say that's closer and just a little south of my annual expense number of $37,000 with the initial upfront cost of $62,000.
So for the first year, to start, to start up, to maintain a program for a year and to start it up, you're talking about something close to $100,000. Is that correct?
No. So year one would be about $62,000.
Oh, I see that, okay, that's built into it.
Correct.
Okay.
And then the annual expense would be $37,000.
Okay.
Can I ask you, this is like a, oh, I'm sorry, am I...
Yes, $62,085. Yes, that takes that into consideration.
Okay, the crystal ball thing. How many, this is all numbers now, not financial numbers, but student numbers. How many kids do you need to run a normal football team?
And then the question is, how many people do they have in the pipeline currently?
I mean, you're guessing, but like, to fill that?
I would feel uncomfortable trying to manage a team with less than 30 kids based off experience and talking with some of the smaller schools in the area, considering injuries, concussions, and ultimately, every single play, nine to 11 people are colliding on the field versus there's no other sport like that. And so when your numbers are south of 30, the need to put potentially freshmen in environments where they're going up against possibly an 18-year-old and where there's no weight class like in wrestling, I think anything south of 30 would be really concerning. And that would be a daily conversation with the coaching staff. As far as the numbers through the pipeline that ORYA have, I do not have that information. I can certainly try to get that for you.
Kenny?
And maybe some of this is for Corey, but being on policy committee, I went to research what our policies are regarding sports. And board members have copies and some copies are there for the public. And although I realize it's not our purview tonight to say that this warrant article won't appear, I do want to highlight a few things. Just as far as the policy itself, our policy talks about different levels of sport and then the different ways that those are handled. And at our board meeting where we approve these policies, very specifically, the notion of pay-to-play was taken out of the policy. And I noticed that this warrant article has a very strong component of pay-to-play. The other things in our policy, it talks about Title IX and the effects that a program will have on Title IX. And this is something that we certainly need to consider. It talks about a feeder system and speaks specifically to Al's point, is there student capacity to add additional sports? And this sport in particular. It also talks about is the program being advocated by students? So I just ask people to read it. In the R document, which is sort of the regulations that we use to enforce policy, it leads off by saying, "All requests to establish a new sport club or expand an existing sport club will initially be presented to the athletic director and building principal to determine if the proposed activity is appropriate for the Oyster River extracurricular co-curricular program." So again, doing it through warrant article really kind of sidesteps board policy. So just maybe in the opening round here where we're first hearing about this proposal, it will be a warrant article. As we, as board members, think about it, I, to read the policies and to really think if this really even coexists or maybe it contradicts our board policies.
Thank you, Kenny. I had a question, Mike. There were three, you know, to go back a couple of years, two or three years, when a very similar proposal was put before us, there were three issues that were, I think, impediments to approving a football program. One was cost in the sense, and I like your sense of this, Corey, that ultimately, the competitor schools that we would be playing fund a football program. They don't, it's not funded primarily through booster club, you know, I mean, you have a booster club, but that's often extra that supports it. But you have, you know, the coaching, the major core of the program is supported by the school.
Yes.
Now, would you say that that's the dominant model and that it's, that they're not, at least at that time, I think there's only possibly one other place that funded, where the district really wasn't contributing in a major way to a football program?
Considering the resources necessary for football, I think there's a reason for that. I know Summersworth went through it for a couple of years and then they've readopted it. Not having the assurance of funding from a school board on an annual basis, which you most likely wouldn't go away, it lends itself to inconsistencies in fundraising, which could certainly lend itself to, you know, fear of survival for the program financially. Because if the fundraising was to deplete, then the cost of participate would go up. And then the cost of participation goes up, that could obviously affect the numbers of participants wanting to play. And because it cannot be an individual sport, you can't survive with five or six, or even 25 or 26 kids. I think that's certainly most likely why a lot of school boards probably require the funding for it, as they do for most of their sports programs. So much like any of our teams, if there was a program that required a large expense, ice hockey's a really good example, and I know the boosters for boys and girls' ice hockey that supplement all their practice ice, you know, that is, if you wanted to attend one of those meetings, that is their top goal every two weeks when they're meeting is they've got to fundraise the money because they don't want to go down a road of having a large expense to be billed out essentially to the family for a student athlete to participate on a team. So with a program like football where it's fairly unknown, as far as our interest here at the high school, per our survey a couple of years ago, the interest wasn't spiking, it does lend itself that if there's not a large amount of interest, that also would remove a lot of large amount of parents willing to donate, willing to get behind, willing to fundraise. to fundraise, which could be worrisome when you're trying to operate a budget and of a program of that magnitude.
Okay. So, finances, the three things, finances was one, facilities was another. And it would seem to me that if you're going to have a football program, you'd have to have like storage and probably maybe a dedicated locker room for football. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, whether, you know, whether we could just take our facilities now and say, okay, we could have a football team given the storage requirements, you know, that would be one thing. And then, also access to a field because it seems like we have a lot of, we have a lot of sports using that field during, you know, so it wouldn't be the football team could go out and use that field every afternoon in the fall because you have soccer, you have, you know, boys and girls' soccer. And are there other teams who are using that field?
Yeah, field hockey's out there.
Field hockey, so like, you know, you have a number of teams using that field and add football on, because it would have to be on that field, right? You couldn't, you couldn't have.
Not necessarily. I mean, as far as a practice environment, you don't need the exact dimensions of a football field. In fact, most football practices don't need, you know, 50 by 100-yard field for their practice environment. As far as doing a game of any kind, no, we wouldn't have that opportunity of the fields. We could line it, and we could rent goalposts, temporary goalposts to come in, but I've taken those expenses out of it. So, as far as the practice environment, we could exist on property here. There would be not financial expenses to that with the wear and tear, whether it's in our grass fields and, you know, it'd be another team using our fields, which is ultimately the reason, you know, we push so hard for a turf field. But one known expense that I could kind of put on paper was the lights because we definitely would need to extend the usage of the turf field with the lights being on.
Corey, if we were not to use our field, what are your other options?
For practices, we would.
For games or practices?
Sure. For games, the most logical option would be renting of UNH facilities, which is built into this expense of approximately $1,500 a game, $1,500 for the rental of the fields, the officials, and then security and rental contracts that we would have with UNH. As far as practice environments go, I know when the presentation was put forth in 2012, the idea of using Woodridge Field in Durham was the main goal of the football boosters at the time.
Did your $37,000 figure include renting a game field?
A game field, yes, not a practice field. So, the annual figure took into consideration finding a home for them to practice on facilities owned by ORCSD that would not pick up additional costs. To your earlier statement, as far as the things that we couldn't pin down a financial number to, certainly locker rooms are already very tight for any of our season sports because we have 275 kids each season, and our locker rooms are very difficult with that kind of numbers of student athletes. When you bring a program like football into play with a helmet that cannot be smushed into a bag, you know, it's 14 by 14, shoulder pads, gear, so on and so forth, and whatever the number of student athletes participating, that's going to obviously be an issue. Storage is a huge issue. I know we have some PE teachers here this evening who can share that sentiment. Storage of all this equipment would definitely be something we would need to figure out and make the best of our scenarios. What that would look like, I cannot say. But at the same token, I couldn't find a price for it because our motto is just make it work. And so, that's typically what we've done with that kind of equipment needs. The weight room area, again, for all our programs, and strength and development's a key component of it. I think it's heightened in a sport like football, again, to the collision aspect of the sport and the core and development of strength so that you don't physically get injured as much.
But Corey, and I think it might be the third point Tom would raise, is if we're looking at Title IX.
Sure.
We're either going to have to add more women's sports or we're going to subtract from the other men's sports. So, in a way, maybe some of that locker room stuff doesn't play out because the football program is taking away from, you know, the soccer team or the whatever.
Yep.
Because we're, and we're either going to get more women athletes or we've got to cut men athletes from somewhere because otherwise, we're out of compliance.
The goal would, yeah, the three things addressed when we had a committee, and we certainly made the suggestion to the school board to not pursue football in 2013, was funding facilities in Title IX. And if the amount of participants were there for a football program and they didn't just swiftly move over from across country, from a boys' soccer, from any other team that they're currently participating in, the numbers could stay within the 3% margin, which we currently exist in. If we were to increase new athletes to the sport, then we would need to get very creative in providing more women opportunities in our building, which I do not know what those would be right now. Because we cover all female offerings that are approved by the NHIA. So, we would, that would be our main goal is to stay compliant, to increase our female participation numbers. And again, that is based off the assumption that the bulk of the individuals coming up for football would be male because football is a coed sport. So, if it came out 15 girls and 15 boys, that issue would not be there.
So, having said that, Corey, what's the likelihood?
Of 30 boys to participate in football?
50/50 in gender, I mean.
Oh, very unlikely.
Very unlikely. So, you're talking about a couple of females who will likely look at this as a realistic option. It's generally considered a male sport because of the issue raised at the beginning, which is if 15-year-olds facing 18-year-olds. So, if you have a male body facing a female body, you have the same issue in size.
To kind of follow up with Kenny's point, I mean, my understanding from the letter when we were dealing with this and for the co-op issue, you know, the Title IX came up at that discussion as well, is that we would have to survey the girls in the school to see if there would be some sports opportunity, you know, that they might want. And I could easily imagine that if you said, if you offered crew, girls' crew, and, you know, you could have regardless against Hanover, you know, I mean, I think that could be a very attractive and also very expensive. But, I mean, there would be a cost that, you know, the cost is, you know, for football, that's part of the cost, but you might have a cost that would come from Title IX compliance. Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
And not speaking directly for our lawyers, but through our conversations with them, that would be an expense the school board would have to assume.
Would have to assume. You could either have to do that or you'd have to go to some other sport and say, you know, no tennis, no golf, you know, you'd have to, which is essentially what's happened at universities, you know, so wrestling has disappeared.
Yeah, Dover went through this a few years ago. When they were out of compliant, they had to adopt and fully fund their volleyball program, which had been operating as a club at the team.
Okay, okay. Denise?
So, listening to all this, I know for myself, I feel like we don't, we have not built any additional expenses into the budget that we've already have, you know, approved. I mean, the $5,000 they're asking us for is minimal, but now we're here, you know, all these other costs and things, I cannot, for myself, I feel like I can't go along with this. I can't recommend this based on the fact that, you know, all these other concerns, but definitely even from just a financial point of view, like we just don't have it in our budget for this year to be able to support this.
Maria?
I have two. Would you be able to send me by email or on a piece of paper all the numbers that you brought up?
Absolutely, yep.
The $64,000. The other thing.
And can you break those down?
Yep. Yeah, so it's color-coded as far as annual expense, and then.
Corey, we'll just meet together and put together a package, and we'll send it out to the engineering board.
Sure.
Great. The other thing, because I've been through fundraising before, there are consultants that will come and look at your community and estimate how much can be raised because, I mean, the ORYA is already raising money, and 68 Hours of Hunger is raising money, all kinds of people, every time you turn around, somebody else is raising money. So, it would be nice to know, you know, what is the ballpark that can reasonably be raised? And does this 50?
The ceiling.
The ceiling. And can this $15,000 or whatever just be added to that pot, the pot of gold? So, that's something to think about.
Yeah. And seeing this school warrant, I wish they broke down the $34,000 to get an idea as to what that funded, to get an idea is really, to put a number out there, I'm sure they have that information, but it's really difficult to navigate what that entails. And certainly, a program of any program that we offer, you know, we wouldn't want to eliminate or not provide the necessary needs for a program. So, I'd love to kind of see what that $34,000 looks like as to how they got to that number. But it's really hard to speculate, obviously.
So, my understanding is we have to make a reserve, we have to recommend one way or the other at this meeting. We don't have another meeting between now and.
We already have a motion.
Yeah.
On the table.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just going to say, just for discussion purpose, that I as well can't recommend this. I think there is, there's a lot of, a lot of expense that goes along with this. And I think it's not only the expense, Corey, that you were able to pinpoint the annual on the startup, but to me, storage is a big expense. I think we've seen it with the music program and the changes to facilities that have needed to be made. And I totally applaud Oyster River staff and being willing to make it work, like you're saying, Corey. But, you know, it comes to a point where I know you can't make it work as well as you need to, and then you guys need to ask for things, and it seems unreasonable not to provide those. And there goes the expense. The expense with the Title IX and keeping in compliance, I think, is huge. And for that reason, I personally will not be able to recommend this.
Yeah. Yeah, and just to sort of build on that, you know, when this came forward, I thought back to the fairly recent discussion that we had when the proposed co-op with Portsmouth came before us. And, you know, frankly, you know, when it first came before us, it seemed like a great solution. And I want to say too, you know, just to start, I certainly haven't forgotten how compelling the student athletes who came before us were, in many cases, very brave. And I find it disheartening that we don't have what I see as a viable option to give them the, you know, the opportunity to continue playing the sport that means so much to them. I truly feel disappointed in that. But, you know, as Sarah was saying, you know, we know that there's significant costs that we can identify at this point, and then there's a lot of unknowns, you know, Title IX, facility issues, impacts to other sports potentially, that, you know, they, those were the same reasons that I was disappointed that I could not support the co-op agreement. And I don't see any change in that reality. So, unfortunately, I can't support this either for those same reasons.
Further discussion? Okay, the motion is to recommend this warrant. So, if you vote in favor, you're voting to recommend. If you oppose it, you're voting not to recommend. Is that clear? Okay. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to recommend Article 8, please raise your hands. All those opposed to recommending Article 8, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. The article, the board, what?
Seven opposed.
Seven opposed, yeah. The board then has voted not to recommend this warrant.
Tom? And then, two things that I want to present to the board. One is kind of psychiatry and kind of when you have people doing things and they go yes, 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 they tend to go yes. And I would recommend that we place the warrant at a different place in the ballot because we want a lot of yeses, and we don't want people to automatically stop thinking and turn off and vote yes if this is what our board's recommendation is. So, I recommend that we move it to a different spot and not make it warrant eight, but move it up to warrant three or warrant five.
So, remember the process, Ken, in deliberative session is it's not a warrant. A person moves the warrant and seconded, and then it's, you can do vote by acclamation or you can do vote by secret ballot, but it's one warrant at a time?
Don't, so, right, no, I'm not talking about deliberative session.
Talking the election?
Because the, I'm talking about as a, we have the, I believe I'm correct, as a school board, we have the ability to order the warrants.
You do.
In the order that they are. And I'm recommending that we change the order so that this is not number eight.
On the ballot. He's concerned on the ballot, not a deliberative.
But in deliberative session, don't you have to go down the line in order that it appears?
Correct. That's Kenny's point.
So, if you move it up, then you're going to, you can get really.
So, can I talk, can I speak to that, Ken? You know, I would recommend, since this is a citizen's warrant, that you leave it for the end, get the board's budget recommendations accomplished before it gets into a giant conversation around football. That would be, I think that would be practical because every warrant article other than this is your budget recommendation to the community, and this one is standalone, and it's a citizen's warrant to the community. So, I think it makes sense to take care of your business and then the citizen's warrant afterwards, just for that reason.
And I agree deliberative, but then, does that mean, does that lock in the place on the ballot that will appear in March? That's, I'm talking more about the ballot in March.
I'm looking to sue for guidance now.
I just think it should be eight. I think, you know, get, it separates our business from the petitioned article. I think to mix it in earlier, I think, I'm not sure it would have the effect that you're talking about. And I think, I think that separation is what we should have.
Yeah, I think the more important thing is that whether you recommended it or didn't recommend it. And I agree, I want to get, honestly, to me, the budget is where my main focus is. I would rather get our things done. Mixing and mashing, I mean, ultimately, the more important thing will be that tag which says whether we recommend it or don't recommend it.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, looking at this and the fact that right next to it is by petition, I, my hope is that that will jog that psychological depth as well. So.
And the second thing, and maybe it's something we've not done, is should we reflect the nature of our seven-zero vote?
I'm sorry?
Reflect the nature that our vote was seven-zero in our recommendation.
Can you do that?
Yeah, I think we can do that through every warrant, right? We can put the board votes recommends seven-zero.
But she needs it.
We'll check on that.
Right, but you need to have this signed today. Is that the issue? Yeah.
So, the ship has sailed. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, no problem.
Okay.
I need the 26 approved, too.
So, we have to sign some things, right?
Right, but you need to approve the 26, MS-26, I need a motion to approve that. I think you had that in your packet, and that is just the breakdown of the budget that gets posted. Did you see that? And then, it includes the warrant articles, and that's just the form that we're required to post with the warrant, with the individual numbers.
Have a motion, Denise?
Motion to approve MS-26 as presented.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Okay. Since this is essentially, this was already approved before, so just, we'll be signing the form. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Motion passes. So, do you have that, just first assigned right now?
I do have them all, and just be.
No. That's two.
How many, how many copies are there?
There's just one of each, so there's three different forms, and I just did one of each.
So, don't mess up.
On each one, you'll see your name next to each. Two.
I guess, just in terms of logistics for presentation, my, what happens, because we've already been assigned, like who's presenting the different warrants, so what happens when we get to warrant number, warrant Article 8? Do we still, does somebody still have to present? How does that work?
Generally, what will happen is someone who has petitioned that will come up and speak to it.
Okay.
It will be, we'll put it in the presentation, put it on the screen, correct? Of course, we've got to put it up there.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, sorry, do you think? So, so do you think there should be somebody from the board who is, would-
No, no, I just was questioning logistically if-
At deliberative session, it can be, the board can take, you enter into the conversation, and I'm sure somebody will ask why the board didn't support it.
I'm just thinking somebody should be ready to answer that question. I'm doing the budget.
Not it.
I will already be up there.
So actually, are you saying we should have a, prepare a board statement? Should the communications committee meet and then bring it back to the board for approval?
Do we have time?
Between now and deliberative session? Sure.
Is that the, the way to go? Because we, I think-
Yeah, I think it's important that the boards have a consistent message ready at, for deliberative session.
Rather than one of us overlapping it. I, I just asked if that's the way to go. I don't know if that's the answer. I asked if the communications-
So if we would have, if we would have a doc, if we would have like a statement of our position, wouldn't the board have to approve that statement before it's presented?
Yes.
Okay. So when would that hap, when, when, is there, we, what?
Do we have a meeting?
Yeah, we have one more meeting.
Okay.
I'll be referred.
So could the, could the communications committee get together and draft a statement?
Well, we are in COBWeb, so I don't think we've met an over here.
I was gonna say.
But I think we will, we will pull it together. We will do that.
So, I mean, is that, is that-
So do we have to make a motion to charge the communication committee with doing that?
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion to charge the communication committee with coming up with a, a write-up on our position on this football warrant article.
Moved by-
Warrant Article VIII.
Moved by Sarah, seconded by-
I'll second.
Okay. Well, discussion on that? Then that'll be brought forward to our next meeting, and then we can, then we can vote on that. Okay? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. Okay. You got a job.
Denise?
Do you want to go on to the next one? Motion to approve the middle school maternity leave, or masked way maternity leave.
What did you, uh?
All right.
Okay, Denise?
Hold on. All right. I'm gonna make a motion to, well, he's signing, to approve the masked way maternity leave of absence from March 6, 2017 through June 2, 2017.
I'll second it.
And I'll second.
Seconded by Al. All those in favor? Seven in favor? Okay. So there's, there's a second maternity leave, right?
While Denise is signing, I could move to approve the middle school maternity leave of absence from April 17, 2017 through the end of the year.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Dan. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. Motion passes. Maybe before we get to policy, we'll just get this thing signed and then-
We're doing what?
Oh, you still have like a Kenny's-
Kenny's letter.
Kenny's letter.
Okay. Maybe while we're waiting, Kenny, if you want to like say what your-
About the Secretary of Education.
Letter to the Secretary of Education?
Okay. So I, I think that our board has tended not to be political. And, and I'm trying to raise this maybe in a very nonpartisan way, but every president presents cabinet to Congress, and it's Congress's obligation to approve a cabinet member. And we have a current individual who has been nominated to be the Secretary of Education. And from my reading of her work, of her literature and her public comments, I don't believe that she really is an advocate for public education. And I think she actually would be very detrimental for public education. And in a nonpartisan way, but more reflecting on our mission is supporting publication, public education. In the same way, maybe we will be considering asking New Hampshire Legislature to add money so that schools can do remodeling or construction. I think for us to advocate for ourselves and for our, our community and our students is very important. And so in that tenor, I would like as a board to send a letter to the chairman of the, the Senate Committee that is evaluating that nomination, as well as to our two senators, Shaheen and Maggie Hassan, stating that the Oyster River School Board does not support that nomination and would, would hope that those senators vote against approval. So I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Maria.
I have a question, just a logistic question. So would, the same thing, would we have to, if you wrote the letter, would it come back to the board to read? We'd approve the thing, and then we'd send it off? Is, is there enough time to do that?
I don't think so.
There isn't. There is, they're in hearings now. So it'd be something you could direct me to write on your behalf, and I could do that tomorrow and submit it without bringing it back to the group, if that's okay.
And you don't have to mention the guns.
I won't mention guns, and I won't mention bears.
And that would be a fine solution for me, if that's a consensus. And, and I do want to emphasize, it's, I, I don't, I don't think it's entering into partisan politics. I think it's about public education, and that's what we're about. And I, and that's where I'm framing this motion.
So should we, if we vote on it with the sense that Dr. Morse would write a letter reflecting these views in, you know, in letters to the, the chair of the committee, the, or two senators?
Or two senators.
Okay. Is that understood? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. You got a job.
Okey dokey.
Okay. Kenny, if you can sign that, then-
Oh.
Get that around. But I wonder if you could move on to policies. Denise?
So I would like to make a motion. We have a list of policies for second read. I'm gonna pull out IKF, and, and I, because I think we need to talk about that separately. So my motion is to approve policy IHBH, and the Rs. IHB, let's see if that's an I or an L. Must be an L. IKAA, ILBA, and IMBD for ado, for second read and adoption as a slate.
I have some questions about the one on competencies. I don't necessarily have to have it pulled out, but I'm wondering if we can talk about that. I guess, maybe this is futile. What I don't see in that policy is like, what happens if you don't meet a competency? Now, imagine like, say, somebody in eighth grade, there's a, there's a set of competencies.
Do we have a second?
What?
We have a motion, but do we have a second?
No motion. Yeah, there's no second.
I'm sorry.
Do a second first, and then discussion.
Okay, can we have a second?
Shall we, shall we pull yours out too, Tom? Why don't we?
Let's pull, let's pull, let's pull.
All right. So I'll amend my motion to also pull out, ooh, I just lost it. Ah, hold on.
Hi.
To pull out ILBA.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So could I speak to the competencies now?
Well, no, because we pulled that out.
Oh, okay. Okay, we're gonna, okay, we're gonna, okay, the slate without that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we have a second for Denise's motion?
Maria, seconded.
Maria.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of the slate with those two policies pulled out, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. Those, that, that part of the-
Okay.
Okay, Denise?
Now, I'll go ahead and we'll talk, we can talk about ILBA first, which is high school graduation competencies. I'd like to make a motion to approve that policy for second read and adoption. Yeah, ILBA, high school graduation competencies.
Second? Maria? So I guess my question is, suppose somebody's in eighth grade, and, you know, you're keeping track of competencies. And there's one competency that this person doesn't meet by the end of eighth grade. Do they, do they go on to ninth grade? Do they, you know, is, and then is the ninth grade teacher responsible for mediating the eighth grade competency that, you know, that the person didn't have? I'm just trying to figure out how this works, you know? What, what the weight of, what the weight of not meeting a competency is.
Right. I, I think what, what needs to happen, and, and I don't necessarily think it belongs in the policy, is that with competencies comes a different approach to how we structure learning. And there does need to be internal mechanisms put in place in the middle school as well as the high school for relearning opportunities to make sure that's built into the, as an ongoing process. Now, you're, you're talking about promotion from eighth grade to ninth grade.
Yeah, just as an example.
As an example. And I do think one of the things, that, that question is slightly different because you're talking about moving from a point where when you get to high school, we're now talking about credit accumulation and, and tracking, meeting graduation requirements. It's a slightly different question once you get to high school because obviously, at the high school level, there are base level requirements that have to be met in order to graduate. Historically, that's been done through, you've got 22 credits, four credits of English and all that. Our courses will still exist and structured, except the credit granting will take place based upon the, the teacher's professional judgment in terms of whether the student has met the competencies adequately to then receive the credit for that class. And as they work their way through high school, they would still be amassing the credits needed to ultimately graduate. So all along the way, there has to be built-in opportunities for a student, if they're not successful, to relearn the material and then go back and relearn it. That needs to happen at the class level. It might also, depending on the level of relearning required, it might involve retaking a class, depending on the nature of the situation. But basically, what we have to do is, is create those structures. So that's something that we have to internally develop. At the middle school, they're already beginning to talk that way about relearning time and, because obviously, they're talking about rolling out their, their, their new competency-based reporting mechanism. And obviously, they're gonna be doing a presentation to parents about it on next week, and then coming back to talk, talk with you later in the year for approval. But again, it's a matter of doing it as an ongoing component. It's not waiting until the end of eighth grade, let's say, and say, okay, you didn't do this, 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 and this. You're not moving along. We need to work with them as they go. I see us looking for lots of ways to utilize different tools to remediate for kids as they go. I can see us providing summer learning opportunities that might help fill gaps. I can see us providing time built into the day that is specifically designated as relearning time, that kids, depending on where they're at, would have options to connect with the teacher they need and, and get reassessed. So it's, it's the paradigm does shift. And obviously, yes, we do need to build structures to guarantee that kids have regular opportunities to be able to do that. So we're not getting in a situation where a student reaches the end of eighth grade and they're being told, okay, we're not promoting you because you didn't master those competencies. We need to build it in all along the way.
I have a question, just like, as we do that, because I was thinking the same thing. It's kind of like an expansion theoretically of summer school. And maybe like that homework thing after school, you could also-
Absolutely.
My question about that, then, is when we are adopting this, because again, that's gonna come with a price tag, both of those things. Budgetarily, if we put this in, when do we have to do that budgetarily to make sure we have the money to actually do that?
Well, structurally, the, the things we're talking about doing are using, utilizing currently existing staff. It's about being creative with the way you structure the day to build those opportunities in. So it's not, we're not necessarily, I'm not saying it never will result in a request for more staff, but that's not the first thing that we think of. It really is, in terms of assessment and, and the way learning happens, it's, it's a paradigm shift, that we're just, we're making that shift. And I think that's the hard part. I mean, even the concept of summer school, I would challenge people to think about that. It, it has always perplexed me that you'd have a student who's not being successful during the school year, and yet you're gonna wait until July to say, you didn't succeed. Now let's go back and relearn this. And under the threat of losing your summer vacation, that's going to be how it happens. I mean, the, the assumption needs to be students are, are, are engaged in trying to learn, and we're trying to engage them as they need to learn and providing them those opportunities. So definitely structurally looks different, but I, I think staffing-wise, it's a matter of just simply shifting the paradigm a little bit and providing those opportunities built into the day.
Sarah?
But I go back to Tom's question because, you know, you, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. There are, there are a small number of students-
Sure.
-for whom it's not an ability issue. It, their success and their mastery of content is based on what they're putting into it or effort, or whether they want to learn it. And as educators, you can't make them learn it. And so no matter how many opportunities we provide as a district, there are still gonna be one or two kids, maybe, or maybe more, that are not going to meet the competency. And it-
Sure.
-may not be related to ability. So what are we, so, so what is in the, if that's not addressed in the policy, where, how is that?
Well, well, again, I mean, I, I do need to make the distinction between the middle school structure and the high school structure when you talk about, because at the high school level, you are talking about, again, meeting those standards and, and credits towards graduation. And so there, it is, for lack of a better way to describe it, a slightly more high stakes concept there because if you're not successfully completing fresh, your freshman English class, that does put you behind the eight ball in terms of being on track to graduate on, on time. So what we need to be doing is looking for ways to make sure that kids are given those opportunities on a regular enough basis. I don't think we're talking about eliminating the need to come up with alternative ways to motivate kids. I, I totally agree with you. I think that you can't guarantee engagement no matter how exciting and, and dramatic and, and interactive the class is. So ultimately, yeah, there are gonna be kids who'll need that. But again, you need to build it into the ongoing process. So it's not a, at the end of eighth grade, sorry kid, you didn't make it. It's, there's been lots and lots of opportunity. And it is, again, it's internal structural changes. I don't necessarily think that's a policy issue. It's how do we account for that within our structure? And you'll hear about it in great detail when the, the middle school people are here to talk to you in a, in a couple of months about the, the level of thought they're putting into the idea of the relearning opportunities. Because, believe me, that's, when you talk about competencies, that is the, the, the key thing, is how do you create the structure that allows that to happen? And I don't have a, a simple answer to that. It's something we have to look at what the needs of the students are and make sure we're, we're doing everything we can to meet those needs. And it's different at different grade levels.
Denise?
And again, I, you know, I go back to the, that conference that I was able to go to last spring on the competency-based learning. And it, it was just a wonderful thing. And it really, I mean, it's, it is different. There are so many amazing opportunities for interdisciplinary. And because it's getting away from, you know, this is your math class, and this is your English class. And it's, it's looking at those competencies, you know, student needs to learn X, and where can they, well, maybe they can learn it in their math class. It doesn't have to be in their English class, or, you know? And it's really getting away from that, you know, here's the class, the, the box, and this is where it fits.
Right.
I, I too share a lot, because I, what I saw at that conference were examples of it being very, very well done, and examples of it being horribly implemented. Like, I was horrified at some of the exam, and they definitely, they showed us like different examples so we could kind of see sort of the gamut of it. So there's definitely, you know, it needs to be very thoughtfully, you know, and, which I believe it is, you know, implemented. It's certainly not something that you just kind of, okay, we're doing it, that's it, you know? But I, I see it as a wonderful opportunity, really, for our students. And I think the policy just kind of gives the framework, you know what I mean? And like you're saying, you know, the details of it kind of need to be worked out more, almost like through the R, I guess, the procedures, you know, how does this, how does this all kind of fall into place? And the, and the policy kind of gives a structure for being able to do that.
Absolutely. And I think, and I think it actually goes beyond a procedure. It's really a mindset change in terms of how we go about doing things. And it requires understanding. And I'll tell you, the, the early feedback that the middle school people are getting as they've been piloting some of this, this work this year, has been that students are more engaged and more excited about it because they have a much clearer sense of where they're at in relation to the competency. Whereas before, you might get a, you know, an 86 and it's like, okay, that's pretty good, right? But what, what is it that I didn't master? And what they're feeling is that students are saying that they feel very good about understanding themselves as a learner and knowing what they need to do. And I think that, no system you put in place is going to be 100% successful all the time, but I think we're getting good results and this is a really exciting direction for us to be heading in.
I was just going to say also, it's actually different from now because if you, if you don't, you know, succeed, there really aren't not a lot of avenues of reintroducing and you're actually broadening the opportunity to more multiple times. So, it kind of lowers the stakes.
Exactly.
With the kid.
You hope, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, I'd be ready to vote on competencies that. We've, we've approved all the.
Lost.
You pulled one, we've approved for a block, right?
Well, I made a motion for this one.
Okay, so, okay. So, motion to approve, what's the policy number?
ILBAA.
Okay, so we can vote on that, right? Okay. ILB.
AA.
A.A. ILB A8?
A.A.
ILB A.A., okay.
Yep.
Clear vote on ILB A.A.? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. Most, the policy's approved on second read?
Okay, now. Okay, so now, the final one, at least before the deleted one. I'd like to make a motion to approve policy IKF, graduation, for second read.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Maria. So, this one.
That's right here, too.
Yeah.
That's right there.
So, it changes the PE requirement and it adds a half elective. Could, I'd be interested just having an explanation of how this, because this, this is a fairly big change in terms of, you know, high school requirements. And so, I was kind of surprised that this would come in to a second read of a policy because it seemed to be a big, kind of a big issue, more bigger than normally we find. Yeah, Maria?
Just to explain, we've been talking about this for a long time, the policy committee. And it's, we decided, there are so many students that would like to take this physical education outside of the school system. But we felt it was important that we get the health education to stay in the school. Therefore, we split it, making it more possible for students to find V-Lax or whatever it's called, in other opportunities to meet the physical education part of it. It's been discussed both with the staff that I gather are not crazy about this change or if we decide to lower the physical education requirements. But it's been discussed at length by staff, administration, and the policy committee. So, this was our, so I think you can find it in other minutes over the year, over the years.
Okay. Another piece of it, too, is our graduation requirements have actually been beyond the state requirement. And so, here, even our social studies, we, we recommend two and a half while the state is two. And we talked about it at policy and we kept that at two and a half. But the physical education requirement, we're now meeting kind of what the state level is and what is done in most other districts in our state. And, and just that split out, as Maria was saying, it used to be listed as two. And that combined the physical education and health education, we split out the half of health and we reduced a half of the physical education. So, I think that's where the, the math came from.
Okay.
And I, and part of it is, as Maria was saying, you know, with the whole, the ELOs, we approved the ELO policy, you know, being able to open students up to more options. But we also talked about how important it was to really to keep the PE in-house to the extent, you know? So, that was the point of saying, okay, we're going to require, we're going to drop that requirement from one and a half credits down to one credit. So, it's going to be one credit, keeping it in-house, you know, probably my, I foresee, you know, probably freshman level. But then that also opens up the possibility of having more PE electives and being able to maybe really, you know, offer some really kind of creative types of courses in that department that students will opt to take without necessarily making it a requirement. So, we kind of saw it as, again, you know, it's all about opening up opportunities for the students, you know? And so, rather than just having this rigid, okay, now, you know, you're, you have this other half credit of PE that you have to fit into your schedule, really saying, you know, freeing them up. Some students are going to take other courses, but also giving the PE department that opportunity to being able to offer some really interesting courses that students might just opt to take because they're going to sound, you know, really interesting, meet their needs, you know, that type of thing. And that's kind of what we talked about in the policy committee.
One, one thing that surprised me, and there must be surprise and reasoning why you did it, is that we just went through a process of like adding positions to the high school because of the desperate need to have electives to meet the requirement, the expectation of the electives for kids. And then I look at this and you're, you know, so it's like, you're raising then the X by a half, the number of electives that students have to take. And it seems to me like, you know, worrying about people going too fast and then you raise the speed limit. It seems to be kind of working against, you know? Because then, because we, you know, we've had to work so hard just to, just to find, you know, create staff so that we could meet the current demand on electives. And so, then you're shifting to have an extra half elective. So, I don't get it.
Go ahead, sure, go ahead. Yeah. I mean, the reason this is in the ELO discussion is that really what we're trying to do is to create more flexible pathways for our students to navigate through our program. So, in my mind, you know, reducing the requirement to take PE does not necessarily mean fewer kids are going to take PE.
Right.
I'll give you a couple of examples just that have happened in the last few years. The shop, shop was, the state changed the state standards that shop could no longer be counted as a fine arts requirement. Immediate result of that was enrollments dropped off. Through some changing of opportunities and the way the courses were structured and sort of the marketing of it, immediately, those classes are now packed. There, there's lots and lots of kids who are taking shop classes because they want to take shop classes. The same thing can be argued about our culinary program. We had, you know, numbers were dwindling. We eliminate, we eliminated the position and hung on to it by keeping a contracted services position. And now, the interest in culinary, where all the classes are packed. So, it isn't about reducing kids doing physical education. It's about how do we maximize the opportunities our kids have? There are countless kids who are trying to map their schedules out in their freshman, sophomore, junior year to make it possible for them to take UNH courses or for them to do a really cool internship at an engineering firm or whatever it is. And one of the obstacles we get into is if we prescribe everything, it's very, the flexibility is not there. And so, kids get to the end of the road and they aren't able to fit it into their schedules and maintain all of their college aspirations and so forth. So, the, the logic in reducing the half-credit requirement is just, it's one place where there is a bit of a bottleneck in terms of choice to hopefully give kids more flexibility as to how that works out. And I think if you combine that with the hope that more kids will take college courses, more kids will take, you know, independent studies and internships and, and have really exciting, engaging experiences, that we're, that we're actually trying to make it a more engaging education. And so, in the end, it may not result in fewer kids taking PE. In fact, I would be willing to bet, and you can quote me on it, within two or three years, the numbers will be back up and we'll be commenting, gee, you know what? There's so many kids who want to take these classes because they're really engaged by that. So, I think that, that's really what we're trying to do. Pathways, open it up so more, more opportunity is there. It's not about trying to reduce the amount that kids are doing, it's making it flexible.
I, well, so, we do have actually a PE elective system. It's called sports, after-school athletics. And that's what parents were bringing forward is, and I can remember when I taught at Shepherd, that, you know, if you were participating in a after-school athletic activity, that counted as your PE thing. So, I mean, we could harness an existing system that we already have that doesn't really cost us any money and provides some flexibility in student's schedule. I just, you know, my thought process, and parents have come forward and said, look, my kid is taking crew or my kid is doing this, why do they have to do PE as well? And I think that kind of falls under the extended learning opportunity thing that we're trying to promote. So, I, I just, as I'm looking at that, I, before I approved this, I think that should come to the table, maybe as a discussion of, can we provide credits for after-school athletics in place of PE?
So, I think that's fundamental to the ELO discussion. And it probably, I, I think actually that's where the ELO discussion actually originated from. And I think, I think at our committee level, and correct me if I'm wrong, that point is, your point is very well taken, but there's more than just, it's not just physical activity.
Right.
It's also other things that you learn with it. So, taking a sport will most likely qualify for an ELO, but there are other components of it, whether that's, you know, what it means with interpersonal relationships, what it means about diet, what it means about, so there'll be things that will add it that when a student who says, I row, I want that to be approved for an ELO, that will be part of their proposal is, it's not just they're rowing for an hour or two a day, but there's also another component which replaces some of the learning that takes place in our formal physical education program.
It actually goes back to the whole competencies we're talking about as a student can take. What are the, what are the competencies that need to be demonstrated through our PE program and then apply those to outside of experiences? And we don't want to lose the rigor, but we want to make sure that they are doing those things. So, it isn't just about you played a sport, therefore you automatically get the credit. There needs to be a look at, are you demonstrating the competencies? And not necessarily all sports equally meet those.
Dan? I may have misheard, but Maria, when you were describing the discussion that led to the change, I, I think you mentioned that there was some staff concern about the change. Is that correct? And, and.
I think it's, it's a change. It's hard.
I guess my question is, is, is anyone comfortable that they can articulate that concern or is it just as simple as change can be disconcerting?
There are PE teachers are here, if you certainly.
I mean, I think it would be helpful to just hear, you know, sort of a basic synopsis of that concern, if that's okay.
I just, just to kind of talk, because we did, we've talked about this a lot at policy committee and, and so, part of the discussion was, okay, we had this one and a half credit of PE. And yes, there was a lot of this discussion about whether students could take, you know, other sports for PE credit and all this. But part of it was, we want them to take some, we want them to take PE in-house because it is more than just about the physical activity. But by removing half a credit, it kind of, you know, because it was really that, that extra half-credit that for a lot of students was creating the barriers that Doug was just talking about because they get through freshman PE, but then they'd have this other half-credit PE that they'd have to try and fit in and so on and so forth. So, not to say that you couldn't have students fulfilling PE through an ELO or what have you, but I think part of our discussion was by simply reducing the amount that was required, that it would sort of take that burden off and students would probably, okay, I'm going to take this one year of PE here at school, you know, free up that other half a credit, you know, they can, as you say, take electives or do other things or what have you. But that's kind of, was that, am I right about that? That's some of our discussion.
And I think the other piece we learned, too, is a lot of, there was a growing number taking PE on V-Lax.
Right, exactly.
Which we thought really didn't have any of the rigor or competencies that our PE department here at school did. And so, we were trying to maybe make that not such a.
Right.
An attractive alternative to students as well.
I just have one question. Like, was there any discussion of leaving the electives at seven? Is it just to get 22? Is that, why, why did you go, why did you raise the electives to 7.5?
We, we just decided we didn't want to lower the total number of credits we wanted kids to take over their four years. That was, that was the logic. That's what, that's what the current graduation requirement is at Oyster River.
So, you just didn't want to raise that issue of changing that?
Yeah, basically. We didn't want to reduce the graduation requirement, total graduation requirement.
Okay. Sarah?
So, it's sort, my question sort of relates to PE, but it's really broader and it links to the ELO piece. So, was there any discussion, and maybe it's in here and I just didn't catch it, was there any discussion of limiting? Okay, so you only have to do 14 of your 22 credits in Oyster River classes, correct? Okay, so that leaves eight credits that can be fulfilled using ELO options.
Or other things.
Or other what?
Electives, you can do it through electives, you don't have to put it together in ELO.
Okay. But if you did, but if you did electives, they would be, I mean, they'd be in-house. Okay, so, but you could take eight credit, six, eight credits out of house. Is that, am I understanding that right? Okay. If you could take eight credits out of house, was there any, was there any discussion of, say, can a kid choose to take all four English credits out of house?
No, they wouldn't be able to do that. Each, well, let me, let me back up. I mean, V-Lax is a accredited public high school.
Right.
Okay? And just like if a student transfers to us from Dover High School with credits in English, we transfer those in. So, I guess you could argue in that case that a student could conceivably do that. I think what we're trying to do is to look at our student population and what our student pop, student population needs are. The vast majority of our kids are doing all of their coursework in-house. The big push that we're really looking at is getting more kids to have college courses because that seems to be a point of demand and to also hopefully open up the door for internships and independent studies that might engage them. The policy does limit the number you can do in any given year. I believe it's two a year, junior and senior year. So, students are certainly directed and channeled to take all of our in-house opportunities as much as possible. However, if a student has a legitimate desire to do something, we can work with them to identify something that would meet a graduation requirement. That's really what this is about, is can we, can we work with them to do that? I don't know if I've answered your question, I think I'm rambling.
So, 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 so a kid is required to take, let's go, let's just stick with English. A kid would be required to take their first two years, which would, in-house? I, I guess my fear is losing, I think the, the product we have here is pretty great and certainly is, is above what you will get in many online courses.
Absolutely.
My fear is that we. My fear is that we could have a situation where a child could take all of their sub, all of, all of their English, or all of their science, out of house. In, in it, I mean, do you guys have to approve that? I mean-
Yeah, the, the whole ELO process, there's a whole approval process, there's-
So you could say, we don't view, we don't think you're gonna get the rigor that you're, that you need.
You, or that experience is not gonna meet the competencies that you need to show in order to graduate, so, so absolutely, we, we could say, no, that experience does not, does not meet our, our competencies. So clearly, we're not trying to lower the bar on the, what we expect of our students, what we're simply trying to do is to make it possible for more individuals, and the, the number of kids looking for alternative ways through our program is just growing, and I think that, that's, that's true across the country, which is, whether we, you know, we, we talked a little bit about the nominee for Secretary of Education, but the whole notion of charters and vouchers and all that stuff, that's coming from pressure from people looking for alternative ways to, to learn and to show what they're learning. What we're trying to do is to harness that and keep, keep it under our program, because I think we don't want to lower the bar on what's expected, but by the same token, we don't want to say that, 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 that's not a valid experience, we can't give you credit for that because that doesn't meet our definition of what a course is. If kids can demonstrate the proficiency of those things, they, they really should have the opportunity, in my mind.
So the, and I think it's why all of these policies came together, because they all, they're all part, and so, to your point, the ELO policy, which has now been approved for second read, and then we also budgeted a position, it starts off by reading ORCSD, School Board Encourages Students to Pursue Extra Learning Opportunities as a Means of Acquiring Knowledge and Skills Through Instruction or Study That Is Outside the Traditional Classroom Methodology and Enhances Student Opportunity Above and Beyond Available Support and Resources. So I think that comes in where you're talking about English, if someone wants to take some generic English that really isn't above and beyond what we can do here, that's probably not gonna get approved as an ELO.
Right.
I think that, and that's why all these policies are so interrelated, they speak to each other.
Thank you, Kenny.
So my thought is, I would like to postpone this and then move it to the next meeting and put it into discussion where there's a more comprehensive overview explaining it to us, how this works, because I, I think putting it in the policy at the end where the vast majority of us are now asking really fundamental questions on graduation is not the best way to approve a policy.
Okay.
So I guess I'd-
I agree.
-motion to postpone.
Second, second?
I second.
Okay, discussion?
Until when?
I said the next meeting.
Okay, all those in favor, postpone. Seven in favor, it'll be on the next agenda. So we, we have no more working policies, right?
I think that was it. Oh, no, no, we had the one for deletion, right, so we have, let me find it, okay.
IMBC and R?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion to, for deletion IMBC, which is alternative credit options.
Moved by Denise, is her second?
Second.
Second by Maria, discussion? All those in favor? The policy's deleted, okay. School Board Committee updates? Maria?
Just want to say a few words about the N68 Hours of Hunger-
Okay.
...which is now serving in the twenties numbers at the elementary schools, as well as the pantries in the middle school and high school, and we also have had some families with real emergency kind of situations, which have been helped in a bigger sense than just the weekends. But I want to tell you about the new business in town. It's called Gabby's Goodies for Good.
Gabby's?
Gabby's, I don't know how you spell it. The proprietor is nine years old, I think, out of Mohammed, and she bakes cupcakes for good. She's a big fan of the SPCA and has given money to them, and she just recently gave N68 Hours of Hunger $50 of her earnings, and I think that is exciting. So that's my report.
Where do people buy her cupcakes at?
I don't know, I think there's special orders if you're having a big party. Give her a call.
Now where is this? Can I tell my wife?
She's a student at Mohammed.
But where, where, where do you get the cupcakes?
I'll, I'll find the contact for you guys.
Okay, for my wife.
I'll find it for your wife.
Okay.
And on the contact, could you put the choices of the different kinds?
Okay, other committee updates? Public comment?
I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. I, I guess I'm slightly confused about the football warrant, if it, if it appro, if it gets passed and we were to implement it, what happens next year? And I, this has been, I've been wondering about that, and if there was any clarification, say, in the next meeting, I'd love to hear it.
Okay, closing actions, we have the list of the future, future meetings.
I guess, I, I guess one thing if, for that policy that we just postponed till the next meeting, saying we're gonna put it as a discussion item, and I realize that the PE teachers have left now, but perhaps they could be, maybe they could be addressed as, you know, address part of the, you know, as part of the presentation or what have you, I suppose, because they didn't get to speak tonight, so.
Uh-huh. Okay, I think that's a good idea, because I mean, there's, I think there felt like there's this whole discussion that's happened, and as a, for now on the policy committee, we haven't been privy to that discussion, and so I think that'll be good. Okay, so could we have a motion to go into non-public session for the superintendent's evaluation?
We were going to check on the weather.
That's right, Kenny, go check on the weather.
Is Maria okay with that?
What time is it?
It looks very good outside. Not very icy at all.
Al, you got a door right behind you, buddy.
Oh, there's a door right there.
Okay.
Don't open it though.
We're having a weather check right now.
If you open the door, oh, will it beep? No, it doesn't.
I don't think we're that sophisticated.
This is like a Passover Seder where you open the door for Elijah.
It's not snowing, it doesn't look terrible.
For those of you in Lee, good luck driving home.
Which, which item did you want to, there, there'll be separate references, so which one?
The superintendent, is there a particular order you think we should do these in, or?
Suzanne and Heather are here for the student issue, so.
My question is, just out of like, for, you know, for Maria, can we just do the shorter one, which is the student one, and then punt the, the superintendent evaluation till February 1st?
Okay.
I like that, all right.
Okay, so we'll just do, do the student issue, just, just do that tonight, I think that makes sense.
So I move that we enter non-public session RSA 91-a colon 3, Roman numeral 2, subscript C, matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself unless such person requests an open meeting.
Moved by Kenny, is her second? Second by Dan, we need a roll call, Dan, will you get started?
Dan Klein, yes.
Sarah Farwell, yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newker, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Maria Barth, yes.
Heather, is your conference room available?